All right, everybody. Welcome. Thanks for joining us today for the first work session to discuss development impact fee updates for Albert County. My name is Matt Witter and I'm with Ref Tellus. We're helping the county do the the study with me as leading the study is my colleague Dwayne Guthrie, who's an expert in these things with many decades of experience in calculating and running these types of studies. So I'll let Dwayne, I'll let you say hello.
Commissioner, staff, good to see everybody. We've been working hard and we've got a set of numbers together for us to go over today. This is supposed to be a work session, so we want the dialogue. We don't want me to talk the whole time because we've got way too many slides, especially after lunch, you all fall asleep about fifteen minutes. Feel free to interrupt as we go along.
I'll note that we have two public participants who are different than our panelists. Any, all of you who have video and microphone access are considered panelists for this work session. We do have two attendees who are actually on the study team. We have Elliot Solsky from FHU. He was a transportation planner and Todd Cristiano, who is a member of Raftellus, who's doing, helping a lot of the quality control on the project. So I see them listening in on this. Gentlemen, if you'd like a participation link, I'm happy to resend that. Otherwise, we'll just be content with letting you listen in and I know you have access to the chat feature as well. So if that's, if you have something to contribute, I'd invite you to use that to get through. So without further ado, I guess I turn it back over to any Eileen or from the, or Sam, if you have any opening remarks, otherwise we'll, we'll get started.
This is Sam. I don't really have any other opening remarks other than we appreciate the work you guys have done so far. So let's start running through it.
Okay, I was sharing my screen. Can you guys still see the slides?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so we've already kind of done introductions, but I'll show you just everybody's list of participants in a minute. We'll go over the engagement plan, basically all the meetings that we're doing. We have a few slides on impact fee fundamentals. I'll just flip right through those real fast. That was, we had those in there more for stakeholders that, and have for the public to see as these things are going to be available, I think, posted on your website. We'll take a quick look at fees in other communities around you, other counties, and then we'll get into the calculations. Remember, they are preliminary. We did send out a set of slides last week, but this is an updated set because over the week we've continued the work and so we've actually made change. The public pay, sheriff and transportation fees over the past week. So numbers are slightly different. They're all laid out essentially the same as it was before, just updated some of the things. So here are the folks that Matt mentioned, the ones that are participating with video and audio and then the ones that are just listening in. Elliot is with a local engineering firm. He's a sub to us. He's also worked with you guys on your twenty eight updated of their comprehensive plan. So he's familiar with the county. Let me just kind of talk about the types of infrastructure and the fees that we're doing. You right now have a fee for recreation, but we're going to add a parks component to that and this for park improvement. So I think we're just going to suggest a name change to Parks and Recreation kind of signify that. You have an existing public facilities fee and existing sheriff fee. And then you have two fees that cover transportation, one's called road and bridge and the other is called traffic analysis zone or TZ. The, we're going to put those together and just call it a transportation fee. I think that would be easiest way to refer to those. Then there's another one, a very small fee of several hundred dollars, a dwelling unit for conservation that basically is for flood control, stormwater management management kind of activities. We're still working on that. Don't have a formal recommendation, but we've had some preliminary conversations. So we're not covering that today, but we will get back to you on a recommendation once we get that finalized with staff. And then yesterday during the stakeholder engagement meeting, one of the folks on the call, you know, said, well, what about open space dedication and cash and loop? Well, technically legally, it's not an impact fee, but it kind of walks and quacks like a duck. So a lot of people that because it's associated with new development. It's actually part of your subdivision regulations, I believe. I haven't actually traced it down in the ordinance, but the idea is that, you know, you can either dedicate open space if you have a bigger parcel or you are expected to do cash and live if you have a smaller one. And I, my impression was that was just redone back less than a year ago. And that I was hoping everything was working fine and we didn't need to look at that, but he gave some pushback that, you know, maybe it was too much, the amounts too high for the cash and loop. But we'll, we'll talk about that with staff and go over what we heard yesterday and kind of decide whether we want to do something with that or not. But today we're not going to talk about open space or cash and loop. So here's the kind of list of what if had the first stakeholder meeting yesterday and we'll be getting some hopefully online follow up comments from folks. That's what we asked to do. Then after the work session today, we'll make further revisions. Basically, we'll have another round of meetings with the stakeholders again, and then a second county commission work session if you, if you desire it. And in November, and then we're shooting for actual public hearing in December, December the ninth. So that's the preliminary schedule. Any comments or questions before I go on?
Dwayne, I've got one. Let's go, let's go back to there just a second. Public hearing, is that a more of a, just a, a formal public hearing with newspaper notice and all that? Or is it more of a, let's do it during a public meeting of the BOCC?
I need to coordinate with Bart to make sure, but I think that should be the beginning of the actual formal adoption process with the do notice and all that good stuff. So that's something that we need to, I'll make a note to follow up apart on that, make sure. Okay. Um. So if you were involved with the kickoff meeting on like Grant was, or if you saw those slides, you already saw some of the impact fee fundamentals is, you know, basically the idea is it's not operating costs, it's not replacement cost. It's additional facilities and rolling stock to accommodate new development. So we're basically adding capacity to county's facilities with the impact fee. We need to be concerned about documenting the need for additional improvements. And while we're talking two different terms, serial errors use system improvements are what we pay for with impact fees. Project level improvements are things that developers are expected to do as part of the regular development process. So like a local street within a subdivision is a project level improvement and that's separate from impact fees and you don't get credit for those. You only get credit for the system improvements if you have to do one of those. We have to always be concerned about benefit to the fee payers too, because it's not a tax. It's you're supposed to make sure that within a reasonable timeframe, we're going to build new facilities and you're going to receive some benefit from payment. There's also geographic kind of concern with a big county like you guys have a lot of land area that we have to be concerned about what we're doing and whether it benefits everybody countywide or not. If you have any questions about that or concerns about that, we need to talk about that as we go along. Yeah.
Just one quick, if you had mentioned rolling stock, assuming was in terms of public works, but does the sheriff's impact fee also allow rolling stock vehicles or is that simply facilities?
No, we have vehicles in there for the sheriff too. And it's the only requirement in Colorado is you have to have at least five years of useful life to be considered a capital item. And so they, they do keep the cars that long. They pay for them over four years, but they keep them longer. So they are, they do meet that test. So why, this is kind of the, why do we do impact fees? Kind of some of the standard answers that most communities come up with is that it does help to maintain the current level of service for residents and business. So you don't get as much pushback, you know, people saying, you know, not in my backyard stuff because they don't want the quality of life to go down. So it helps eliminate that. It does also help minimize the need for broad based revenues because if you don't pay for the full amount with impact fees, you're basically either allowing their levels of service to go down or you're subsidizing growth with general taxes. And most residents don't want to do that, especially after they, they get into the county, they might, they might change their tune along the way. And then we, the other, from a developer's perspective, it does offer a more predictable kind of funding system for helping pay for system improvements. Because if not, if everything's on an ad hoc negotiation for every project, there's a lot more risk and uncertainty. This way, if you have an impact fee, you kind of know what's expected. It's easier to build that into your performer. And a lot of times the developers actually prefer that from our financial perspective. Again, but it's a matter of degree and how much you change things. If it's not a big change in dollar amounts from the current fees and it's not such a big issue, but if he's, you know, double or something like that, then, you know, that course is more of a.
Hey, Dwayne. On the top of that slide on the title, we might want to change from White Cities to White Counties.
Okay, good point. Number six. Yeah, jurisdictions or something else. Yeah, we'll fix that. Appreciate that, Dave. So here's a, just a kind of decision tree that Matt put together to help us kind of explain it, especially to the general public is that, you know, they're basically, you got to kind of choose the path and then that, that you're going to you want to kind of be aware of your choices and what, what happens if you go down a different path. So the kind of left side of the graphic is if we adopt the maximum supportable fees is what we're kind of documenting, what you could charge, not necessarily what you should charge. That's where you guys consider the whole economic development perspective. What's best for the county, all these different kind of complexities. Might choose to adopt less than the maximum supportable. But if you do the maximum supportable, it's kind of like growth pays for growth. It's what people will mostly, you know, say. And that, that's that kind of philosophy. If you choose to adopt less than the maximum supportable, then you're basically are looking at two options. You're either going to reduce your levels of service over time or your infrastructure standards over time. Or you're going to have to subsidize growth to maintain those levels of service using. In your case, it's probably a broad base revenue like property taxes or sales tax. And then with the property tax limitations in Colorado, there's not a lot of flexibility there either. So, you know, sales tax is kind of like your most communities. So how do you crunch the numbers? Well, there's really basic three main methods that we can use and have to do a different time perspectives. Where you're looking backwards, saying we've already oversized something and we want to kind of recover that cost. We want to, the middle one is more of a snapshot of the way things are today and we're just going to maintain our current levels of service. And that's what we're doing with the first draft and the fees that we'll look at. You can do a plan based method where you actually say, you know, like if you finish your transportation plan, you have a whole nice list of projects, you can switch to a plan based method and, and use that list of future improvements to drive the. If you do that, the middle one, there's basically three steps. It's just a simple algebra formula that we've kind of laid out there. It's, you know, what's a good indicator of the demand or the infrastructure service units per development unit? So that's like number of people in a house, the average number of persons per house or vehicle trips for thousand square feet of non-residential, that type of thing. The middle part is documenting a quantitative standard, like how much stuff do you have for some indicator of demand? So it's like how many acres of parkland for a thousand people, something like that. And then the far right is just cost factor. So we have like a dollar per lane mile on the transportation fee and that helps us come up with actual amount charged impact. So there is, it has to be quantitative set of calculations to avoid, you know, appearing as arbitrary tax or arbitrary, you know, capricious or the key legal phrases that we want to avoid. And we also want to have a quantitative formula method that's easy for people to understand so that we can show proportionality and that we're not discriminating by type of land use and all those kinds of things that the legal folks are concerned about. Any questions on that before we head on? Okay. So here's the current fee schedule that you have. It's kind of small, but you're probably familiar with it. Let's start at the bottom because it's actually kind of easier to see. We have three residential categories, AD is accessory dwelling unit, and then we have single family and multifamily units. And then for non-residential, for some of the fees, we don't, we don't vary the fee by type of non-residential. So in other words, industrial pays the same as a shopping center, as an office building, everybody pays the same. So that's the case now with public facilities and sheriff and the road and bridge fee, the one that varies by I'm sorry, the road and bridge and transportation are done a little differently and that the transportation fee then has a lot more detail on the non-residential categories. Currently using thirteen of those. What we're kind of suggesting this time around is to do a consistent three general non-residential categories for all the impact fees. It'll all be done the same way. So that's kind of a current best practices. A lot of places have gotten away from more detailed categories. But having one fee that everybody, for instance, all types of non-residential pays the same sheriff fee. Well, that's really kind of a little bit problematic for the proportionality in that you're probably, you know, overcharging industrial, but not charging enough for retail, that kind of thing. So to kind of help balance that out, we think three is a good, good starting point. We can add other categories, you know, pick any off that list if you want to have them in your current fee, like you do in the current fees. But for right now, we're going only show you three general categories.
Yeah, this is Grant. I've got a question. Is that one of the things that we've been criticized here in the county about quite a bit is why we don't have some kind of a sliding scale on the non-residential stuff. For example, a hay barn gets charged the same impact fees as a Walmart. And and they don't have even closely similar impacts. Is there some way we can develop some kind of a sliding scale that we can, once we do the, the basic math that we can recognize what the real true impacts are?
Well, we are recommending that you go to three types of non-residential for all the fees. So we're going to have an industrial, basically an office service kind of category and then a retail restaurant category. So they will vary by dollar amount across those three and you'll see that in just a minute. And then they also vary per thousand square feet. So it's that rate multiplied by the size of the building. So convenience store pays the same rate as a Walmart, but the Walmart is, you know, a lot bigger. So it pays a lot higher fee.
Is what about some kind of an agricultural based kind of business?
It has that. We can add that and I need to get into the details. That's a little more on the implementation details that we haven't quite got to yet to work out with Christina and Bart. But we can have an agricultural category. A lot of places would just charge them like an industrial, like a warehouse. But you're right. If, if it's not generating as much impact, we can have an additional category for that.
It's a good suggestion, Commissioner. Thank you.
Yeah, put that on my list. Um, so as far as comparing to your neighbors, we've looked at counties to the north of you, Rapaoh and Adams. Think that Douglas County to the west does not have impact fees. We're still trying to verify that for sure. Christina's looking into that and we think, but we think that that's accurate. And then to the south, El Paso also has impact fees. The other, your neighbors only have fees though for transportation. You have four types of impact fees. So it generates, you know, your, your dollar amounts are higher than the other jurisdictions. So I just summarized the numbers that you're seeing for Adams and Arapahoe are for the eastern part of their county because they, they kind of have a more urban suburban western portion and a more rural eastern portion. So just put the numbers on here for the east. They have five categories of residential, you guys that were proposing four. So everybody's kind of in the same ballpark, how they go about it. You have a lot more detail on the non-residential, the other communities have three and El Paso has eight. So you kind of get a sense you're not that different from the other ones, but you do have the higher dollar amounts. And that's primarily because you're doing four types of infrastructure. Any question on that one? Right. So on the update, this is kind of just a simple summary charted words to help you kind of see the cost components and how we're doing the, the service areas, the unincorporated. So we're only collecting impact fees from new development, unincorporated, not in the, the three towns. They're all current draft is based on incremental expansion of the, you know, basically documenting the service, current cost factors and turning that into an impact. For the cost allocation on parks, it's could be just on residential. For public facilities and transportation, we're both, those were going to use what we call functional population. That has to do with, I'll show you the math on that in just a minute. We have a separate slide on that. But it's basically the people that live in the community, the jobs located in the community and making some adjustments for commuting patterns and then assuming some time, how long you spend at different location, residential versus non-residential. So that will show me the math behind all those. And then on transportation, it's using average daily inbound vehicle miles of travel. So basically we only can collect impact fees from new development within Albert County. So unlike a transportation model that will consider trips outside the county or even pass by trips that just go through the county, don't even really stop at the county. All that might generate cars on the road. We're not, we don't can't collect impact fees from that. So we're just going to collect it on inbound travel to new development within Albert counties, how we're calibrating everything. And again, I'll show you the math of that in just a minute. So I have a couple of slides for each type of infrastructure and they're all going to be kind of laid out the same. The numbers are kind of small, but you have the printed report and you also have the slides. You can hopefully see the numbers a little better. So I just wanted to kind of give you a snapshot of the way we're doing things. So for park improvements, you have improvements at the fairgrounds and you have a small park called Matheson. Together, that's thirty five acres of improved area. So if we kept that ratio or figure out the level of service that ends up being one point four three acres per thousand residents in the county. So if we use that ratio and keep it constant over time, we, it would go from the need to grow from thirty five acres today up to forty six acres ten years out. So we need to add eleven acres of additional park improvements. And then at a cost factor of eighty seven thousand seven hundred per acre, which is what you spend at the fairgrounds. That would be basically almost a million dollar of improvements over the next ten years for just parks. We do the same similar thing on the recreation buildings. So there are two buildings at the fairgrounds or exhibit hall and ag building. We know the square footage of those. So we have a level of service standard expressed as square feet per person in the county. So it's less than a square foot of about point eight square feet per person. And then the cost factor, all the cost factors that we use them for buildings came from the facility condition assessment report by, was prepared by a firm named TerraCon for you guys back in twenty nineteen. So we're using data out of that to come up with a cost factor. So for recreation buildings, that's the lowest cost factor. It's only a hundred and thirty five dollars a square foot. And so this similar kind of math, they showed the increase in square footage over time. So the comment, keep them same level service standard, you'd need about thousand square feet over the next ten years. And that would be roughly eight hundred and twenty five thousand dollars to spend on recreation.
The fairgrounds and other TerraCon report looked at existing buildings and kind of deferred maintenance and other potential system requirements over time. But we also have a fairgrounds improvement plan that was put together. You know, I think in twenty thirteen that included quite a bit of new construction. I don't know if that was.
Well, I did look at that. That'll be helpful to figure out what you want to do in the future. This town is just shows you what the financial need is and then you can turn that into specific projects. Like in the draft report, if you flip through that, you'll see there's just a blank table in the back of the park section that says, we're going to next draft identify some specific improvements. And so that's where we'll put those kind of that information there.
Okay. Yeah. And just since I interrupted you, the other just a commenter, as we talk more on the, on the transportation piece, I certainly get that, you know, we can't account for folks that are just transiting the county. But where we've got new development that truly is supporting a commuter base that works elsewhere. Those, when you're talking inbound or you're just capturing the, the return inbound trips of those people that are working here or living here, but working outside the county or we discounting.
No, we, we did adjustments to help account for the commuting patterns where basically increase the residential fee because those people are are living here, but working outside the county. So yeah, we did try to account for that.
Thanks.
So just as another just as another comment, I know we have the fairgrounds and we have the little park at Matheson, but the county owns a large number of other undeveloped properties that have been allocated for open space or recreation. And then secondly, your populations are way off. In twenty twenty, our population is about twenty eight thousand plus.
Well, we want to use consistent numbers and so we took the, the, I think we're using census bureau numbers for the base data for twenty seventeen to twenty nineteen. We'll look at that. Nobody said anything about it yet. But I know there are different sources. There's, you know, state demography officers, your probably own staff. So we'll look at that. There is a draft write-up for the demographics and development rejections that we've already also put out there. So if anybody has any comments, we'll definitely try to look at that.
Yeah. And I would say this one, this is unincorporated. So the, the towns, the three towns populations were subtracted too. So
Yeah, that's, that's
It's closer. Yeah.
So Dwayne, a couple of comments for me. One is that that TerraCon report, we just asked them to look at buildings that had seats in them or had people in them primarily. There are a lot of other recreation buildings at the fairgrounds, including two riding arenas, some livestock barns, some pavilions. If you need that information, let us know and we'll get you a more complete list on that. With reference to Grant's open space comment, we do have a lot of other open space, but I think you and I had that discussion. We currently don't utilize it for recreation at this point in time. And, and we basically don't allow public access to that open space at this point in time. Except for possibly thirty three acres and right up against the town of Elizabeth, where they actually use it as a a walking area, although we don't have any facilities really tied to that. So that, I just wanted to, so let me know what you think on those.
Yeah. And I think the strategy was that the impact fees we use for park improvements. And you can do those improvements at those sites that you mentioned, like Sam mentioned, you have like a hundred and twenty acre site that was dedicated for open space that really hasn't been improved yet. So you can do improvements at those areas. You could put a parking and a trailhead access and restroom and stuff and, you know, and then build trails in those, in that open space land with the park improvement dollars.
So I guess I'll need to walk through the math with you on whether or not we add, need to add all the square feet on the recreation buildings and how that calculates into the one thirty five and the the cost allocation formula underneath that, the residential per square, per person square foot. I think that the other thing is when, when, before we release this, I mean, they're going to look at recreation build, the entire public's going to look at recreation buildings and say, well, why don't you have this, 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 and this on that list someplace? So we may need to add them and then caveat them if they're not relevant to the, to the calculations. Does that make sense?
Sure. Yeah. And, and then we just have to make sure we don't have apples and oranges like for the other fairground buildings, like an open hole building wouldn't be a hundred and thirty five dollars a square foot. We'd have to use the different cost factors, but we can do, we'll figure out the.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions about recreation? This is the, this is the way that I showed you what the fees would be. So that the top of the table are the, basically a summary of those previous slides showing how many additional acres you need and the cost. And then we allocate that, you know, turn that into a cost per additional service unit, which is the case of the additional resident. And then we use a number, average number of people per housing unit to turn that into an impact. So these multipliers, I have a slide at the end that shows the documentation on those, but basically we crunch the numbers assuming that accessory dwelling units only have zero to one bedrooms per unit. Multifamily typically averages two bedrooms a unit. And then we broke out single family into two categories. So it would be a fee for a three bedroom unit. And then if you wanted to, we could add a fee for four more bedrooms. Because basically the logic is the larger the house, to a point, you get more people, you get more vehicles available, you get more income, you get more travel. All those kinds of things add up to or justify a higher impact fee for the larger unit. All those kind of things add up to or justify a higher impact fee for the larger unit. That's not a requirement, but again, it's just to help make the fees proportion. We can come back to that when we get to the end, uh, when I show you the documentation on. So let's take a quick look at that functional population. Um, we just kind of described the concept. I I mentioned it. So there's a residential component and then a non-residential component, which is based on jobs located within Elbert County. It's not necessarily employment. A lot of times you'll see Census Bureau employment data has to refer to, it refers to data on people that. Live in the county and what they do for work, but this is jobs located in the county. And we can get that from a Census Bureau web application called On The Map. But unfortunately, the only the latest data is twenty seventeen. So to be consistent, we're using twenty seventeen. Population and twenty seventeen jobs from the Census Bureau. Then we know from this down at the bottom, this is kind of the summary of the commuting pattern in the county. Where roughly, uh, sixteen hundred folks live and work in the county. That's what this round circle means. Then almost twelve thousand though leave and go work outside the county. They don't go west like the arrow implies. I mean, they don't go east like the where arrow implies. That just means conceptually they leave the county. They're not going in that direction. But you also have some folks that come in about another two thousand that live outside but work in Elbert. So. Using that commu- commuting data, which the numbers are really small now on the bottom right corner, but that's the same numbers that you'll see up here. We know the population and how many people work versus don't work. And the ones that work, we know whether they're resident workers, um, living and working in the county or whether they're outflow commuters. And then, um. For the number of jobs that you have in the community, some people, you know, flow in to fill up those jobs. So that's the kind of dynamics that's going on as far as the basic commuting patterns. Then we use this column here. It's called demand units or it's expressed in hours per day. We assume, for instance, Daniel Bay. Annualized average, but nobody stays home well for hours a day every day. You know, on an average, you're still going to go out some to shop and go to church and doctor's office and all that kind of good stuff. So, um, on an average, it's twenty hours at home and four hours out. Um, then we have, um, you know, different assumptions for what folks that work. You know, basically you're splitting your day between work and home and and so. Put all that stuff together, but what we're recommending is that residential development pay for eighty-three percent of the cost. Sheriff and for public facilities and then on non-residential development pay for seventy percent. So that's kind of abstract, but this is a co- a common methodology that's used in impact fee studies. Uh, it's a good way to allocate the costs to kind of look at your local di- um, demographics and your commuting patterns. And, um, you do have a higher percentage on residential than a lot of communities that work in just because you don't have many jobs. And a lot of people are leaving the community. And so as your job base grows, hopefully it'll get more balanced. You know, if you were an island, it would be fifty fifty and you'd be are pretty much fifty fifty, but you're not, you're you're kind of the bedroom community.
For employment, does the employed numbers, the resident workers, does that include those that are working in agriculture on their own properties or? Um, I I see the numbers a lot uncomfortable with them. I've just never.
Well, this is there, there, there are a bigger broader set of numbers, like if you see numbers published by the BEA, the Bureau of Economic Analysis. That'll include sole proprietors and self-employed folks and all that. So a lot of the ranchers and those kind of folks are are self-employed. Are sole proprietors of their own LLC or something. So they're not in this data. This data does have agricultural workers. But it's the only work, it's done by your quarterly workforce employment.
Okay, yeah, I mean, it's for the purpose of this study.
Basically just capturing the ones that come and go.
Demand, put demand on infrastructure. Yeah, okay.
So we we do have, um. Some data on them, but this is not the bigger broader like all the self-employed people and all those old proprietors. This is just the ones that basically have to drive around for jobs.
Okay, thank you.
So on the building, um, facilities, we've kind of put the justice center in the sheriffy. And then the other four major buildings in the public facilities fee. And our other additional small buildings, it's just a matter of, do you want us to focus on these four larger ones or we do we want a more comprehensive list? So glad to hear your thoughts on that if you want to put those in. Right now, we just have the data for the historic courthouse, then Albert Office Building, uh, in Kyowa. Uh, the Health and Human Services Building at the fairgrounds and then the road and bridge shop behind the courthouse. That's all that we've got right now in the fees. Um, we did the similar thing. We split that floor area eighty-three percent to residential seventeen to non-residential. And then we divide by either population for residential standard. Or inbound vehicle trips for the non-residential standard to come up with the bottom right corner here. You see the current levels of service. Any questions or thoughts on this?
Dwayne, this is Kyrie. Can you hear me? Okay, so historically, uh, I I think we have a couple of issues. Lumping road and bridge shops in with the public facilities is not the way it has historically been. The road and bridge impact fee was for our facility standalone, just as you have the justice center for the sheriff's office. That's where the shops were for the road and bridge impact special. We don't feel like that should be lumped in with the public facilities impact fees. It should be standalone. And the road, two road and bridge shops, which we're still missing the similar shop, we feel should be in that category by itself still.
Sure, we can, we could package them that way if you want to. We just have to be clear because you. Um, when you go to spend the, spend the money, if that's the way you've been doing it, then we can, we can split those out and put them in the transportation fee.
Well, it shouldn't be the transportation fee. The transportation fee was the task fees that are collected. The road and bridge fee should be for our building separate, just as it always has been.
Well, there's kind of a trade-off here and we need to talk about the wisdom of how to structure things. We don't want to create too, the more narrow that you, the more. Specific funds and the how narrow you define things makes it harder to spend the money and accumulate enough dollars to do something. So there's kind of a balance. Uh, we might want to be that in the transportation fee, not create a separate fee for it. And then that'll give you more flexibility how to spend the money. Um, right, it's not going to change the math. It's not going to make the fees go up or down. It's just. Kind of the counting of it that we're trying to, it's a trade-off. Um, I I think it's generally better. For to have fewer, larger pots of money that gives you more flexibility when you go to spend it.
That's fine, as long as those two shops are calculated in with those transportation fees and taken out of this for the public facilities. Cause you're talking about two separate administrations pulling out of that same bucket of money that. Uh, if it's all lumped together, it's probably not going to work too well.
Okay, and we, so we need to add the small shop that's in Simmo, is that what you said?
Yep. Yes.
Okay.
Good catch, Kyrie.
Any other buildings that you want to put into the list? Like Sam, I wasn't sure on the historic courthouse, is is the annex in that twelve thousand square feet or not? You know, right, are you familiar enough with the numbers or the the TerraCon report? No?
We'll have to, we'll have to check on that annex, but yeah, if it's not in that twelve thousand, we need to add that in there.
Yeah, because that's a pretty big building and it's like two or three thousand square feet, right?
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, I wondered about that myself when I was going back through it. Um, so let's, let's check on that. Um, and any other ones that should be added that you can think of or? All right, thanks for that input. We will, we will package that and move the shop buildings out into the transportation with the next draft. On this one, this is the.
Hey, hey, Dwayne, I'm sorry. I'm a, I'm a little slow this afternoon. There is one other. Health and Human Services, we need to see if that's what HHS one and and or HHS two included into it. Uh, it was probably not part of the TerraCon assessment because it was black, brand new when it was dropped or it wasn't even. Open for business for HHS two. Um, so let's, uh, let's, we'll clarify that too.
Okay, yeah, that number those came from appendix A. It's actually near the back of that study. But there are detailed, I think, worksheets and we should be able to add up the individual sheets and see whether it's in there or not.
Hey, Dwayne, uh, just one other point here. The population, this one says countywide. Should that be the same twenty-four thousand number without the incorporated towns in there or not?
No, and this one, I think because a lot of the, what goes on at the. Uh, Health and Human Services and then the courthouse, you know, you, the county commissioners are county wide commissioners. I think it's probably better to use countywide. It it low lowers the fees a little bit. It's the more conservative approach. But because we are collecting, only collecting new development in an incorporated area. The towns are basically getting a free ride. So there will be like eleven percent. Revenue shortfall just because approximately eleven percent of the development is in the town. And so that, that's just how the math's going to work. It's not going to fully match up because you're not going to collect from the town. Okay, and I think on the sheriff, we also use countywide, but when we get there, we'll check and see, um, if that was the case about. So on the public facility vehicles, um. These are all road and bridge and public works vehicles. Um, and it's the comprehensive list. I just put on the red over there, just to, we still have to check and see if there anything in the list that's fully depreciated. And so we need to take that out. Um, I know Michelle's been overwhelmed trying to figure out, um, getting the budget finished up and and, um. Um, she's heading out, uh, right off to the sunset to do something else. I don't know what, I didn't hear the details. Um, we, so either between Kyrie or Michelle or somebody, we need to check and see if there's any, you know. Older things in here that really have been fully depreciated and so we need to take them out.
Hey, guys, this is Kyrie and Rory. So again, on what we just spoke about. If we're going to put all of the the money into transportation, all of these vehicles need to go over to the transportation as well and not. Calculated into the public facility.
Kyrie, I was going to say the same thing unless there's anything in there that's specific to, uh, part of the fairgrounds.
Correct, and I can tell you everything that's on the top there, uh, that is none of the fairgrounds. This is all road and bridge equipment.
Okay.
Then the only thing, other, other thing would be anything that Bobby had to, uh, to do, uh, snow removal or any of that, so.
Yeah, because there's several snowplow and dump trucks and snowplows in.
Yeah, but that's, that's primarily road and bridge.
Okay. Yeah, and and even.
None of the pool vehicles or anything are on this list.
There are more vehicles that we didn't capture?
Um, yes, none of the pool vehicles or anything like that are in here. I don't think, uh, you know, I'll have to double check. I'm looking at the crew pickups. They, uh, they might be in there. But tractors, I know that that's missing fairgrounds tractor, so.
You have more.
I don't know what we were specifically asked for. Uh, this came from Ethan, but I believe this is just the road and bridge. Um, asset list.
Okay, so road and bridge should go in the transportation fee. Any other, you call them pool vehicles, that should stay in the public facilities fee, correct?
Yeah, because we have both, we both, we have both vehicles in pools and then we have allocated vehicles to the assessors. Assessors office, um, public health. Other general fund.
All the general fund ones to stay in the public facilities fee.
Okay.
Okay. All right.
Everyone, I just wanted to pause Dwayne really fast and, um, acknowledge and welcome, uh, Diana Edstrom, uh, who has joined us and is observing over on. The attendee side of things. So, um, welcome Diana. Glad to have you here.
All right, any other thing about the vehicle list before we go on? So again, this will change and moving all that stuff to the transportation. I think it's, it'll line up better with the current fees because you'll see in just a minute, the transportation fees were going down. And the public facility fee go way up. So if we reallocate some of that stuff, it'll balance out and it'd be more similar to the way things are today. So that, that's a good, good change. I think it'll be, uh, make the fees the more aligned with what you're already collecting. But the way that the numbers were already set up, then we were, you know, doing the same kind of math of projecting out the need and the change over time. So, um, it'll, we'll have to redo it, but you'd need to basically another eleven thousand, um, five hundred and thirty-five. Square feet of additional buildings over the next ten years and expanding the rolling stock or the vehicle and equipment fleet by forty-three. That's not replacing forty-three vehicles. That's forty-three additional things. So one, one question to kind of ask ourselves, are we being realistic? Because. Vehicles don't drive themselves. You need personnel to drive them. And so, you know, can we really expand the fleet that much? And without expanding staff. So those are the kind of things that you guys need to think about and make sure we're being realistic. Uh, and, uh, what our projected need is, and we don't want to overstate. That's just kind of something for you guys to think about because you're, you're more, much more hands-on and kind of know the operations of the county and. Uh, we're kind of looking to you to kind of do a reality check on that. So like I said, the preliminary public facilities fees are showing big increase, but, um, this will, once we repackage things, it'll be more in line with the way things are. They.
Just entitling if, um, I think if we have a public facilities slash equipment or something, just. Just so we are clear that this is broader capital spending than just facilities.
Right. To avoid the, um, confusion with the, with the road and bridge one, do you want to change the? Name to something like general government buildings and vehicles or with that?
Yeah.
I will talk to Sam and, um, Bart and get their kind of opinion because, uh. All that doesn't really too matter too much until we get into actually writing or figuring out what the columns.
Correct. Yeah.
Hey, Dwayne, this is Dave. Is there any way we could skip to sheriff? Because I have another meeting here in like ten minutes.
How about right now?
Perfect.
So here's the Justice Center building. It's thirty-five thousand square feet. So that's really everything. That's the jail. That's the court part of it and that's the sheriff, uh, office, you know, space on under all the that. Um, so all that's in that thirty-five thousand square feet. Uh, we allocated the cost eighty-three percent, the residential seventeen, the non-residential, like I already explained. Uh, the sheriff has thirty-six vehicles and the new one, uh, we haven't assumed cost is two thousand. That's for the vehicle, all the information technology, communications, weapons. And all the stuff that goes into a car to make it operational, so. So it's pretty far projected need on vehicles. The fleet, we go from thirty-six up to forty-seven, so eleven over ten years. Basically a new car every year added to the fleet. So that kind of again rolls into the, you know, need for new officers and things like that. I'm kind of thinking about. Then on the buildings, um, it would go from thirty-five thousand square feet today up to forty-five thousand. Seven hundred and seventy-four and ten years out. So, um, it's about with a car cost factor of three hundred and seventy dollars per square foot. Which is also from that TerraCon report. Um, it's a higher cost factor because you have all the security measures and. Jail's real expensive to build, that kind of thing. Um, it would be almost, you know, four million dollars worth of growth related needs over the next ten years, just for the law enforcement building. Any questions on this slide before I go on?
Uh, just you have a reference at the top to police buildings versus sheriff, so.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, we have to have a credit on this one because we are, we just refinanced, we, the county just refinanced the. Um, Justice Center, uh, loan, um, we had about a four million dollars, I guess, still outstanding. So we're going to do an annual, a credit for annual principal payments. The idea is that if you pay your full need as the impact fee, um, that that covers your gross share. Then you're going to be asked to, once you move into the county or are the, the business in the county. Your property tax is going to be used to help pay off this note. So there's a potential double payment. So we take the annual, um. Payment, we split it the same way as we do the cost and then we divide by the number of people and the number of trips to come up with the annual. Uh, amount per purchase unit. And then we add to the bottom a small adjustment for net present value because, you know, it's a series of revenue over time. So it's a little bit of reduction. So it's a little bit of reduction account for the time value of money. And so we have to reduce that impact fee by that credit amount. So it is that gets the total dollar amount is like four hundred and forty-seven dollars a a person, a hundred dollar credit. So, you know, the net is three forty-six, so you kind of see how they. On this one, you're only looking at a um you know, not a unreasonable um law enforcement sheriff fee, like, you know, members are kind of in Colorado. It is a in pretty big increase, almost a doubling from what you have today, but not unreasonable for what we see in other. Big changes down the bottom on the non-residential because now everybody paid the same, but um have to vary them by type of land use, then the retail goes way up because you know, there are a lot of calls for service to Walmart and to bars and all that kind of stuff. And so they should be paying higher amount than the current amount with kind of basically, everybody pays the same and it's not really proportionate. Okay, any other Dave, anything before we go? Good? Alright. Transportation, Dave can leave before we get to fun. So on transportation, um it's a little more complex, but we think we'll be able to basically use the incremental expansion method to document a reasonable fee. Uh be nice if the transportation plan is done, but we don't have to wait on that. So let me just kind of show you the preliminary analysis, get your input. We're we're gonna use the idea of functional classification, which is what this map shows. His impact fees aren't gonna pay for improvements to state highways or interstate highways, and they're also not gonna pay for the local streets. Anything within a subdivision. It's really that middle part of the functional classification, the arterials and the collectors that we're gonna use impact fee dollars for. So on the map, the only uh blue line, the principal arterial that's not a state road is north-south one here, the Kyle Bennett. Then we have um minor arterials or this kind of gold color, a lot of them on the west edge of the county over here. And then we have collectors, which are the green lines, and those go everywhere, even now in the eastern part of the county. But those are the kind of roads that we're focusing on with for impact fee expenditures. Any questions on the maps out of your twenty?
Dwayne, it's Roy. I maybe it's confusion on my part, but I'm still having difficulty not including all of the roads in the county because every single road in the county is an asset. At some point in time, it's gonna have to be improved. So I again, like I said, maybe I'm confused, but maybe you can explain it a little better so it makes more sense to me.
Sure, well, um remember, impact fees can be used to maintain or to replace your existing infrastructure. It's just.
I'm not I'm not talking about maintaining. I'm talking about capital improvements.
Right, and what happens with the residential subdivisions, like on the very northwest county corner of the county up here, you see all the little squeak of the lines. All those are being put in by the developers and then paid for by the, you know, homeowners when they buy property. So those aren't something that's an impact fee item. That's a that's a pro project level improvement. So we're not putting them into the impact fees cuz we're not having to pay for them. We the county is not having to pay for.
Well, and and I understand that. What what I'm talking about primarily, I mean, I I think we all agree, development needs to pay for development. I'm talking about improvements to roadways based upon our existing standards or what the new traffic master plan may come up with.
I think Roy was saying we'd make sure we have a comprehensive look at how we're um setting things up and what we're doing and how we're accounting for all the roads. And so I was just trying to understand his perspective on.
So you want to reshare your screen, Dwayne, and then? Yeah, a little bit better.
Okay.
Yeah, that's great, Kyrie. And I I think Rory probably wants to to chime in cuz I I'm questioning whether that's gonna satisfy him.
Understanding the development is for development and task specifically created for improvements that are ancillary to that contributing development to get that. A lot of other roadway county that may not necessarily have a development that are adjacent to them. Because of our traffic counts, uh because of potentially what what we get out of the transportation master plan. We're gonna have to improve those roads. It's not a maintenance, it's a capital improvement. So we're gonna have to pay start looking forward to pave the new roads. That's what we've tried to build into which is what obviously we're gonna adjust on an annual basis. So again, maybe maybe you're looking at a different formula, and I'm not understanding this exactly. That's that's kind of where I'm at with it. I'm still I'm still struggling with this and confused as to why we would or roadways in.
So look, um can you see in this functional classification map or not? So on the functional classification map, we're saying you can spend the money on any arterial or in collector. When just saying we're not spending on interstates, we're not spending, you know, on county on state roads, and we're not spending in our local roads. Um it's a local road like a gravel road out on the any of those that aren't currently a collector. If it the volume increases and you need to change the functional classification to a collector, then you could spend impact fee dollars on it. Is that maybe the part that's not clear?
Yeah, I I yeah, I mean, I think.
If that's the case, we need to sit down and reclassify this cuz cuz it's not correct.
Okay, yeah. I think I heard a little bit of it. It really broke up, Kyrie. Let's schedule a a meeting with Elliot and um Curtis, I think it is, from Kimling Horn. And um you guys and me and kind of get into the details and make sure because I think this old map from twenty eighteen, like you said, might not be the right thing to be showing it. Um we might even have a newer version, or you might need to reclassify some stuff based on current traffic volumes. So, yeah, let's cuz I mean, all right now, it's just words that are just saying anything that's defined as an arterial or collector. It's not saying it has to be a green line on that map. It's just the concept. It needs to be an arterial or collector, not a local street, not a not a state highway, not an interstate highway. So right now, it's just that that's the concept. It's not these lines on the map. But it's good for people to see the map to kind of understand it. So if if the graphic's not quite right, we'll figure out a better way to show it.
Hey, and this this is me being a little nifty, but I'm trying to look at it. And point or or residents, if they're looking at this, there's really no differentiation between Kyle Bennett and Elbert Road and eighty-six to forty-four. I I and that's probably just a labeling thing, but I want to make sure that if we present a document like this, that there's an indicator that those are not county roads. They are state highways. You understand what I'm saying?
Mm-hmm, yeah, I I yeah, and if people aren't familiar with the county, they'll think all the blue lines are the same, but yeah. So we it might be better that we just create a new graphic and um the folks at Kimling Horn are, they probably already have all the GIS stuff, and it's probably easy for them to do. Or staff, you guys might, I think you have some GIS capability, so we'll we'll figure that out. But right, I just tried to kind of pull something out of the comprehensive plan map to kind of illustrate what we're getting at.
Alright, thanks, Juan.
Have these roads have any bearing on the formulation for impact? It's so really need to that with the numbers.
I don't I don't know, Kyrie, if others could hear you, but I could. It was like you were speaking in a can.
Hey Kyrie, the the um microphones on these laptops are very directional, and so you kind of need to be sitting like just right in front of it and talking into the camera in order for it to pick you up.
Oh, there you go. You sound great. Yep.
The the bigger question on this map is i- if it's if it's just a picture to get the idea, great. Has any bearing on the numbers, the formulas for the impact, it's very incorrect. That's the bigger.
I think we're gonna have to do a call later, just with a regular phone, cuz we're not hearing you, so.
But but I think the the point is that it sounds like Kyrie and um and Dwayne, you guys could get together offline and work this out and come back to the next meeting with um a recommendation that uh commissioners could get behind. Um we can get these, we can get this fundamental thing uh worked out. So I'm pretty optimistic that we can get get it in good shape.
But let's go ahead and um kind of just quickly go through um the way we set the average trip length up for this draft was basically the based on the inventory of paved roads that are um county arterials collectors that are shown listed here. And rather than just do a simple average, we're say thinking that the better way to do that would be a weighted average, which is average trip length of six point seven miles is the weighted average for all the for the segments that are shown there. Um basically, the rationale would be that, you know, um that every time somebody makes a trip in Albert County or to to development in Albert County, it's likely that you're gonna have to uh travel on one of these paved county roads. And that's a good indicator of the central network that needs to be expanded and as we uh grow. So that relationship with the amount of paved lane miles that we have today uh and the amount of development that we have today, we're gonna keep that relationship constant. So we expand the number of paved roads that uh as growth takes place. And so we turn that and basically this is the simplified travel demand model that takes trip generation rates and these assumptions at the top. And this is where the um one of the adjustments that we were talking about that um one of the commissioners brought up about commuting patterns. Well, the normal trip adjustment rate is fifty percent. That that would capture all your inbound travel. Um for residential, it's sixty percent because of we get the data from the Census Bureau and the people that work outside the county. And we put some of that that journey, the work, travel outside the county back onto residential. And so that's why it's higher than fifty percent. Um the other one that's different than fifty is commercial. Um we had a higher percentage on the previous draft. We lowered it to twenty-four percent because after we looked at the assessor data for um Albert County, we noticed that, you know, all your residential buildings are relatively small. They're smaller than the average shopping centers that were in the national database that we were using. IT multiplier from the previous draft. So because your commercial buildings tend to be smaller, we reduced the pass by percentage to a lower amount. So anyway, the assumptions at the top then are multiplied by your projected development, which is here in the middle with the housing units and and non-residential floor area expressed in thousands. So KSF stands for thousands of square feet. So then we turn that into trips and to vehicle miles of travel and then to the increase in lane miles. So maintaining your current ratio of lane miles to vehicle miles of travel, we'd need to add about thirty lane miles over the next ten years. So um roughly ten, three lane miles a year. And then county staff gave us a cost factor of four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars per lane mile as a kind of a typical cost factor for uh making improvements, um which would be things like uh paving a road, um doing chip steal, all those kind of um improvement. That's it kind of right now. Um would like to get a little better documentation on what the assumptions are for the four hundred and twenty-five thousand. But at least we had something that we can kind of put together in the draft fees and see where it would be.
Dwayne?
Yeah.
Sorry to interrupt, but I just noted that um Kyrie had a question in chat um asking why just paved, what about gravel?
Yeah, this is granted. That's a good question because most of the the yeah, the the roads generally service the major uh PUD subdivisions. But right now, we're starting to get quite a few what I call minor subdivisions, four and five uh lot at a time. And most of those are on gravel roads. Yeah, we can we we can do that. We probably just have to have two separate cost factors, one for paved roads and another one for gravel roads. But we can certainly do that.
I was just gonna say that previous uh Western Albert County Transportation Plan, like the data was two thousand eight to two thousand and ten um vehicle miles length or yeah, the just the uh vehicles per day, there was about a hundred and twenty-six miles of additional paving that was required based on that at that point. And I think the the cost then was about eighty-seven million to meet that need. Um I don't know if that. And that was just, that was just the western half of the county from Kyle Bennett. Um we're we're doing the the whole county transportation plan now. So there there was a substantial capital need um identified almost ten years ago that may not have been captured here. I mean, part of that was part of the one percent sales and use tax we have. So there might be some some calculations in terms of you know, what what was to be addressed through uh the sales tax and what impact might pick up. But we had substantially substantial additional pavement that was required even then.
Okay. Look at the old study and we um we got Elliot's been talking to Curtis and there was like a um big stakeholder meeting that they were waiting to do. And then we were supposed to get back together and do some more work. So we're really from the consultant side still needing to quite a bit of effort on this. And I think it's kind of just coordinating all the the moving parts. Basically, Curtis says, let us get through this stakeholder engagement thing, and then we'll get back together. So this is, I think, kind of crude right now. So we'll need to refine it a little more, but the kind of comments like adding gravel roads is the kind of thing, exactly kind of thing I was looking for. Um, so I'm just showing you where the preliminary fees are. They are decreasing, but this is again, we didn't we need to move it over all the vehicles and the buildings, the shop buildings, and I'll put all that in here. So that'll change things quite a bit. And then if we put in gravel roads, uh again, it would change um because before the public facilities fee was going way up and this one was going way down. So I think it was just more of a packaging problem. So once we get the that straightened out, I think the fees will be more in line where what we have today. But um the ones down here at the bottom that are color coded, these are the other categories that you have today. I just put those down here to kind of give you a feel if there's any of these that we want to keep or not. And just to kind of point out the fact that we just for the comparison of current fees to proposed fees, this ten thousand dollar fee is basically what you call commercial retail, which is like a shopping center um category down here. There are other ones that pay a lot more, like fast food places, convenience stores. You see those range from seven thousand to fifteen thousand. So there are some that pay more, some that pay less. It's kind of hard to show and know what to show is the comparison, but um kind of gives you a feel for that basically um you know, then you just need to talk about decide whether we want the additional categories or not. Alright, I think that we're about to the end. This is the um summary slide. Like I said, the public facility fees are still really big. Transportation fees are are probably small, so we'll move some of those dollars over here. But total, it it's kind of just a reach shuffling from one to the other, might not change that much, but we'll have to crunch numbers to be sure. Or way the preliminary numbers are that, you know, not much of a change at all for accessory dwelling unit. Um pretty hefty increase for a four-bedroom, single-family. But again, those are houses that probably cost, you know, three hundred to four hundred thousand dollars. I'm not really sure in your community what that would be uh for the larger four-plus bedroom, single family. Um then these were industrial would actually go down. Uh office and other services actually a small decrease. And the only non-residential one that would go up would be retail restaurant. Last two slides are just about the demographics of how we came up with the multipliers by bedroom ranges. Um we collected data that actually the Census Bureau sends out monthly surveys to everybody. And it's called the American Community Survey. We get the actual census results minus that personal identifiers. And we so we can actually crunch numbers by the bedroom ranges is how we've got it done. But Albert County is divided into two, what I call Pums areas. So the western part of the county is in one area and the eastern part was in another. But Albert County is divided into two, what I call POMs areas. So the western part of the county is in one area and then eastern part was in another. So we had to put both of those into the analysis, kind of get countywide, uh, information. But this shows that, you know, the average number of people per housing unit, and then we customized the trip generation rates. Those, the multipliers down here, the custom trip generation rates. But we, um, basically calibrated it all or made it match up to the national average of nine point four four, um, being the multiplier that you would see if you just looked into the latest version of trip generation from institute transportation engineers. So it's, um, the breakout by size is based on Albert County information, but the overall average is still in line with the national average. And then as far as the actual land use assumptions, we're assuming about two hundred and eighty-four unit housing units per year increase over the next 10 years. Um, that's based on state demography office latest numbers. They're more conservative numbers than you had in the twenty eighteen comprehensive plan. They've come out with some newer ones. So they're, we're using the, the newer numbers are a little less. But, um, you know, I think you're pushing the two hundred and something units per year already in twenty twenty. So you've had a pretty good building year. So I don't think these are unreasonable assumptions. Um, the non-residential is pretty conservative, only twenty-eight thousand square feet per year. Um, that's, um, not a lot of space being added every year, but, um, that's assuming that the job growth increases at the same percent as housing growth. So hopefully that, that, that will happen, but that even might be optimistic.
Yeah. Our, our goal desire is that, that non-residential and jobs within the county growth faster.
And that was one of the reasons we've kind of structured the fees the best we can to make them lower, especially for industrial and office and those kinds of things actually would, you know, be lower under the newer approach than what you had before. And that was the kind of the reasoning that I was talking about a sliding scale so that we can get some kind of a, uh, a realistic impact for, because some of the things that we haven't, we have a very large amount of what I call GPC businesses in the county. In other words, uh, businesses that have not gone through the regulatory process. And, uh, most of the reasons when you talk to people that are doing this is because they can't afford to come in, go into compliance. Right? Well, appreciate all your time. I didn't expect to go an hour and a half, but I, I know it's a lot to get through. Um, we appreciate any feedback. Give it to Sam or, um, Eileen or any of the staff members and, or directly to us. Either way, it's fine. But copy them if you put anything in an email. So they'll, they'll have it too. I would really appreciate it.
Sounds like we have discussion, everybody. Yeah, thank you.
Most work to do on the transportation. We'll schedule something with Elliot and, um, Curtis and, and public works folks and road and bridge folks. And we'll get that, try to get that cleaned up a little better for the next round of meeting. Sounds good.
Well, thank you.
Thanks, everybody.